Good evening and welcome to the November 12, 2019 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with our typical pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And during our moment of silence, we ask that you keep our first responders and servicemen and women and all of our veterans around the globe in your thoughts. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped. If there is anyone in the audience who is either audio or videotaping, would you please identify yourselves? And seeing none, we can move on to public comments. We have none this evening. Council comments. Anyone for council comments? Okay. Town managers' report. You're on deck there. You're at bat.
So, first order of business, I wanted to make sure everybody had the pleasure of meeting Jackie Sullivan, our new assistant town clerk. She joined us last Wednesday, and she's had a blast ever since. I just checked to make sure. No, she's a real asset to the office, and I know Jeannie feels that way, and so we're looking forward to having her work with us and for all of you. So, welcome Jackie. She brings a lot of experience with her, so we're quite pleased. Voting machines, the procurement has been completed. You'll notice, if you looked at my report, I had some anticipatory reporting. I had left a blank for who the successful low bidder was, thinking I'd have it by the time I wrote this, which is one of the problems writing in on Thursday when you meet four days later. But anyway, it was LHS, which is the vendor that I think was the preferred vendor from the beginning, but they also had the low bid, which made it easier to select them. And they are going to give us a rebate on the old voting machines, and the equipment is due November 21st, if I'm not mistaken. And they'll provide some training, and so I think we'll have some comfort level in the town clerk's office with respect to the upcoming series of elections. Last week, November 7th, the council on aging hosted a veterans dinner right out there in the dining room. They asked me to come and introduce myself, which I did, made a few remarks, and it was really very well attended. The room was packed. Many of the vets came in their uniforms, and it actually turned out to be a very nice night. There was a couple of speakers. Carolyn Brennan and Alicia Smith from council were the hostesses, if you will, and Robin Frichette from Rep. Ash's office was here, as was I, and the veterans officer, John Commerford. And at the end of the evening, they distributed these little medals that were wrapped in cellophane, and I think I had already expressed this to the chair. They asked us, the speakers, to distribute those, and the first person that I gave one to actually had tears in his eyes when he was saying thank you. So, it was a really emotional night, and it kind of took me by surprise. I don't know why it did, but the level of emotion in the room was quite high, and it was very meaningful. So, I was glad I was invited, and I was glad I was able to attend it. It's a nice event, and I understand they do it each year. The bulk of the rest of my report talks about our ongoing HR issues in town. And this is not a negative report or intended to be negative by any means. I'm just trying to inform you that a disproportionate amount of my time has been spent on HR issues, and the absence of a director and an intact HR department is cause for concern. So, we're dealing with a number of important issues. Some are urgent, others not so much. They all demand attention, and they're all, well, they have different degrees of complexity. But I just want to assure you that time is being spent, and I, in my view, proper steps are being taken to address the concerns of the employees and to make efforts to improve some of our training in-house and to make better managers and give opportunities for people to improve their skills so that we institute perhaps performance improvement plans in some cases and take appropriate steps so that everybody's treated fairly and gets an opportunity to express what their own concerns are with management of their departments, and then we'll try to work out a feasible solution. But there's quite a bit of issues, quite a number of them, ongoing, and they're very time-consuming. So, I have requested of the chair that we have an executive session to deal with some of the more urgent matters at your next meeting, and I believe that request has been granted. But so, you'll get more detail then. I do want to give a little kudo to Elaine Drumalde. She has really done a great amount of work re-establishing the HR department in a short period of time, and we've issued a directive to all the department heads that we want to centralize and consolidate all of the personnel files in town. Currently, they're sort of scattered. Many departments maintain their own, and some files have certain documents and others don't, so we're trying to, you know, get a uniform content list, an index, if you will, and then filter through some of the older records of retired people or employees who have resigned. And in compliance with the Secretary of State's retention records schedule, we can shred some of those old records. But that's a work in progress. We actually had Alex Shipman do an overtime shift on Saturday to sort through the bins of documents that have landed in that HR office, just because it's a task that can't really be done during the ordinary course of the day because there's too many interruptions. So, she put in a day on Saturday, and she'll do it another time, but it's a great help to us to have that done. And I also interviewed a retired municipal employee from Amherst, who was the HR director up there for a number of years, who's now doing some consulting work, and that individual was going to submit a proposal to me, which came in yesterday, and I haven't really had a chance to take a look at it. But that would be another potential resource, short-term basis, for maybe a month or 60 days to help us get the pillars of the infrastructure back on solid ground in that department. So, if that proposal makes sense, I'll come back to you seeking that authority to bring that person on in some capacity. Again, in HR, the retiree benefits fair was last Thursday. It was very well-attended. Had a lot of positive feedback from Kareem Trangizi, who worked very hard putting it We had the tax classification. The assessors board has set the values, and I understand that they'll be before you tonight with their recommendation on classification. And our finance director will be here also to give you a little bit of a recap on the status of our budget preparations for 2021. And also, we don't have a free cash number yet, but we should have an estimate, I hope. I don't know if Sarah's here yet, but...
She is.
Oh, she is, okay. So, she can address those things later. And the fire chief will be here to discuss his proposal for acquisition of a second ambulance. I guess I'll reserve my remarks on that until he makes his presentation, and I can perhaps add to what he has to say or make my remarks when you're ready to hear from him. And lastly, third to the last, I did speak with Frank Posniak, who's the executive director of the Commonwealth's 9/11 program, on the subject of emergency dispatch. That issue has come up in the sense of whether or not East Long Meadow should reconsider partnering with another community in combining our emergency dispatch services. The ongoing discussion from past years, I understand, was where it was to be located. I think the discussion has sort of moved on from that, at least in my view for now. We're more concerned with, does it make sense to even revisit the inter-municipal agreement that was drafted two years ago and never executed? We're still trying to narrow down some of the budget items of our own community in terms of dispatch. But Mr. Posniak, the reason I spoke with him was I wanted to determine what the Commonwealth's view was in terms of grant funding for combining dispatch, and he assured me that there's all kinds of development grants still available to incentivize, if that's a word, the consolidation of communities, because they don't favor single-community dispatch services. They're anxious to have communities regionalize those services. So, he gave me the names of a couple of the people in the finance division of the EOPS, and he was very gracious with his time and said he'd be happy to talk further. I also received an inquiry from Hamden about pursuing this conversation with them. So, none of those discussions have taken place yet. These are just phone calls that have kind of gone. But it's a topic that I think we need to look into as a community to see if it makes sense fiscally and practically and operationally, so I'd like to move forward with that. I did go to MGM this morning. There was a...
Do you win?
If she didn't, she wouldn't be here right now.
That's right. So, no, she's got to do it outside. They had a media event at which they were taking pictures of representatives from the various regional communities that had been the recipients of mitigation funds, East Long Meadow being one. So, they put out a nice little breakfast-y brunch sort of event and lots of cameras and a big check that was, you know, as I heard the chair say, it was probably, you know, six by 10, and we all stood behind it, and they took a few pictures. But it was great. Bruce Debbins from the gaming commission was there. Seth Stratten, who was formerly an associate with Fitzgerald Attorneys, now is legal counsel for MGM. He gave some remarks. Mary Kate Murin, who's one of their public relations officers, was there and spoke to us. And I had the opportunity to rub elbows with the colleagues, your colleagues and mine, from Wilbraham and Long Meadow and Agawam and Hollyoke and a few other communities. So, it was a nice event. Channel 40 did interview me, and after about a three- or four-minute interview, the reporter said, "Okay, thank you, Mary." And as I turned to walk away, he said, "Oh, wait. I didn't turn my stuff on." So, we had to do it all over again. So, I don't know if it ever made the news. I'm kind of hoping it didn't. My last words to him were, "Please, just make me look good." So, I don't know if it made TV or not. Let's see, I can't even read my own writing here. Oh, since Jeannie has taken over officially as the town clerk, she's now also started to give me orders about where she wants her office located. Just kidding. So, we're starting to revisit that issue of office planning, space design, on the first floor at least of the town hall. The traffic that comes into the town clerk's office that needs to then go to the collector's or treasurer's office is really heavy, and it does seem appropriate, and I guess it's a conclusion you've come to some time ago, that those offices of the town clerk should be back where they were at some point, at some point in the past, and that should happen quickly. So, there's a lot of other dominoes that fall, depending on, because if they move, then other people have to move, and then other people have to move, and we want to make sure that we are not, you know, upsetting everyone's work environment all at the same time. We like to keep our upsets sequential. So, we'll be working on that. But it's the time of year, I think, when it might be best to try to tackle this in the winter or the quote-unquote "slow season." So, that's what's going on in the town manager's office.
Thank you.
Thank you. No questions?
Yeah.
I do.
Sure.
On the call center, a couple things on that. I mean, somewhat encouraged that Hamden is talking to us, but hopefully, it's the reverse of what we were discussing in the past, where Hamden wants to come here and have the call center. One of the things, if you're talking to your sources, if you could request, I have, is, and when we were researching the last time, I have not found one example in the Commonwealth where a call center is hosted by a community a third the size of the community like East Long Meadow to Hamden. And the other thought is, and when we were doing our previous due diligence, was the fact that a lot of the 911 equipment, if you lose it, you ain't getting it back, and if you have to get it back, you're not getting any money from the state. So, you have to really hope that the marriage is going to work, because, you know. So, again, the concerns I had is a town, you know, 5,000 roughly, and we're 16,000. And I called and tried to call the state up and try to do research, and, you know, again, it was an elevator interview type thing on the phone call, but they couldn't think of a single example where the larger community had a smaller community host. So, if there are some working examples of it, I would like to hear it, please.
Okay. No, I know that's a concern that you've expressed before, and we've not gotten that far yet.
Okay.
I do not have an understanding from Hamden that they're willing to come here, so just to, I don't want to mislead you. They're not, that discussion has not occurred.
Okay.
I think they would still like us to go there, which is the opposite scenario from what you view as the optimum, but we've not gotten that far in the discussion stage yet. I'm still at the budget phase. I'm trying to determine what the savings would be either way, if we consolidate these.
And can we try to approach other communities to see if they want to come to us?
Oh, sure. I mean, this, Mr. Posniak suggested that we look at Chickapi, because that was the site that Long Meadow partnered with, and they're amenable to taking other communities on. And I think the state frankly would prefer that. They'd like to have two or three or four communities in one place. They're not opposed to two communities, but they're very much opposed to single-standing communities. So, believe me when I tell you that the conversations have been preliminary, and I'll certainly be mindful of your concerns, because you have expressed them before. I seem to recall quite clearly that discussion or two. So, I don't have any examples where I can tell you a smaller community hosted a larger, but I think the thinking is that it really is just a call center and that the size of the community or the population isn't perhaps as important as we might have at once thought it was. But I don't know whether that's true or false. I don't know where the...
I mean, you know, we can save this for future discussion, but one of my thoughts was the fact that, you know, at least get input, as I'm sure you will, with our police chief, our fire chief, and see what their thoughts are and see if it's changed than last year.
Yes, I will certainly do that in half already, so, but we'll pursue it in greater detail. Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes.
I have an additional question, and it revolves around our efforts to get municipal agreements with other towns to help out with services. And one of those discussions we recently had was if we move ahead and authorize a second ambulance, there was a discussion that maybe Hamden would be willing to work with us to provide monies to the town? Or I'm not sure how that's going to work. Is that part of the discussion?
Yes and no. The ambulance issue, I think that you're referring to, is Hamden, as I understand it, is currently without ambulance service. And Action Ambulance, which is a private vendor, had a proposal in mind that they presented to East Long Meadow and to Hamden, that they would cite an ambulance in Hamden, which would serve as a mutual aid responder to East Long Meadow pending East Long Meadow's acquisition of a second ambulance of its own. That meeting took place in late October, and since then, the issue has arisen that Hamden needs to pay some money to Action in order to establish their ambulance service in that community. And in order to do that, they have to have a special town meeting. It's not yet been scheduled. So, that whole issue is sort of on hold, at least from East Long Meadow's perspective, it's on hold. If Hamden proceeds or takes that next step, and then we'll get back into the conversation, but for now, we're just moving ahead on our own plans. And our second ambulance, once it's acquired, would serve as mutual aid responder to Hamden and to other communities around here, but, so I think that's what you're referring to, but, so it's kind of met a dead end, until Hamden does something to appropriate money.
Okay.
And we don't have any basis on which to move forward.
That's the question, yeah. So, basically, it's up to Hamden.
Yeah, it is.
No other questions? Okay, moving on to number six, approval of minutes. You have in your packet the open session minutes for the October 22 meeting of the council. If there are no changes or corrections that you see, then I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to accept the open session minutes of the October 22, 2019 Town Council meeting.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the October 22, 2019 open session minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda, communication, correspondence, and announcements. This is a happy one under announcements. We have an Eagle Scout citation for one of our residents, Mr. Jake Berry, and we have a citation for you, Jake, on behalf of the East Long Meadow Town Council. Our sincere congratulations for your achievement of Eagle Scout and your service as a resident of this community and as a member of Boy Scout Troop 179. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Jake, tell us a little bit about your project.
I'll have pictures first.
Tell us about your project.
My project was to repaint the parking lot lines at St. Mark's Episcopal Church on One Porter Road, because they were...
In need of it.
They were very much in need of it. It took two to three days, I believe, working on a couple of different shifts. It was a great time, though. My friends and I all enjoyed it very much. We had a good team effort. And, you know, some people may call me Tom Sawyer, but, you know, having everyone else paint lines for me, but...
That's not a bad thing.
It's what I was supposed to do.
That's right.
It's what I was told to do.
Good management skill.
I led a project.
There you go.
I did, I delegated.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Nice to see that. Okay, we are scheduled for public hearings, one at 6:30 and one at 6:45. However, open meeting laws prevent us from starting them early, so I will entertain a motion to go out of order on the agenda to at least move into orders of the day and use the time in between, which is roughly six minutes, to perhaps address some of the licensing matters. So, move?
Second.
Only to return to...
Only to return to the...
Public hearing, once it's as close to 6:30 or passed as possible.
Correct. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? In your packet, we have the approval of a one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church for November 16, from 5:00 to 11:30, for a Vietnamese New Year's celebration. If there is no discussion, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
So, move?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the one-day liquor license for St. Paul the Apostle Church for this Saturday, November 16, from 5:00 to 11:30 p.m. for the Vietnamese New Year's celebration, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes unanimously. Also, we have before us this evening the approval of a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple on November 16, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. for a fundraiser. If you have no questions regarding that application, then I will entertain a motion for approval of this one-day license.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple, November 16, 2019, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. for fundraiser with the fee waived as requested by the applicant.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. And finally, we have an approval for a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church for this Saturday. It's going to be a busy night here in town. From 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. for the East Long Meadow 125th Celebration Gala. Again, that's in your packet. If you have no questions, I will entertain a motion...
I have a question.
Yes.
And it really relates to all three of these. We're getting more and more of these that request deferral of fee.
Uh huh.
And I think our fee for regular liquor license has gone up to 65.
65, that's correct.
And I wonder, this is costly for us to do. It's costly for the town clerk. It's costly for the license commission. It's costly for...
The police, fire, and the building inspector.
And I wonder if we should consider not having a complete elimination of the fee, but drop it to $20 or $25, something that's a reasonable amount.
Well, actually, I think I can address that, because back in 2016, when we created subcommittees for the council, I was appointed chair of the licensing subcommittee, and the subcommittee undertook the review of all categories of licenses in town, be it liquor license, animal licenses, entertainment, you name it, car, auto, you know, used car license. And we had determined that, two things. We looked at surrounding communities to get an idea of what their average was, and we also determined that there had been no movement since 1989 to address any of the, an increase in license fees. That said, we relied on the aggregate and then the mean of the area communities, communities like ourselves, not cities like Hollyoke or Springfield, because they have innumerable licenses that they issue. And we arrived for this particular category at 65, because it was pretty much what the industry is bearing right now. The fee waiver only comes into play if it is civic, if the event is civic-oriented, and I'll just use the example of often the Unico comes before us for a license to put on a dinner.
No profit.
Right, because they are going to take the profit and give it back in the form of scholarships. I asked our clerk if, I would say there's less of a request lately to waive the fee, more...
I would say so.
Yeah, there's more...
Even if they want the fee waived, they have to write an explanation.
They have to write an explanation.
And then it's up to the web licensing authority whether you grant the waiver or not.
Right, right.
Based on their explanation.
Right. Previous to 2016, I think it was common practice if an organization who was the petitioner for a license asked to be waived, it got waived without any justification. And we tried to be cognizant of why organizations have fundraisers and tried to approach it in as humane... in as humane, if you will, a way as possible, and try to tighten it up a little. And yes, we do waive fees throughout the year, but we don't waive them all. I think we waive less than the average that we get. Does that...
Thank you.
Is that an answer?
Absolutely. It's our, it's our contribution.
Yeah.
The first one is not.
The first one is, when it's a, in this case, it's a cultural celebration and it's a party. And they've asked, they've not asked.
They have not asked. They labeled it as a fundraiser, but they've not asked to be waived.
It's not a civic event.
Right, it's strictly for their, their...
It's their own community.
Their church community, right.
All right, that was my only question.
Okay, did, do we...
No.
No, we didn't. We didn't do a motion on that, okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for this coming Saturday from 5:30 to 10, or is it, yes, for the One, East Long Meadow 125th Celebration Gala.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. It is 6:31, so we can move back into normal order and conduct our first hearing this evening. And this is a public hearing for the approval of a change of manager and change of officer/director LLC managers and change of stock interest for the Tudor House Discount Liquors Incorporated at 161 Shaker Road. And this evening, we have Attorney Coyle.
Correct.
And the owner of Tudor House, Mr. Champagne.
Yes.
Good evening.
Manager.
Manager, manager, owner.
As Madam President indicated, my name is Benjamin Coyle. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Bacon Wilson, located at 33 State Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. I have with me today the proposed sole officer/director and shareholder, Mr...
Mr. Coyle, I just need to, I'm happy for that introduction, but I have to officially open the public hearing and go through the required protocol.
Sure.
And I'll have you pick up right where you left off in just a few minutes. The reason for this public hearing is to discuss a liquor license application for the approval of change of manager, change of officers/directors, LLC managers, and change of stock interest for the Tudor House Discount Liquors Incorporated, located at 161 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. The counselors from the left here, Counselor Richards, Page, I was ready to say Ralph.
Ralph.
Ralphie.
Ralphie, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. Now I'll ask the clerk to read the notice into the record, please.
Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws that Tudor House Discount Liquors Incorporated, 161 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a change of officers/directors/LLC manager, change of stock interest, and change of manager. The Town Council will hold a public hearing on the application on Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. in the Council on Aging Media Room, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. For the Council, Jean Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Coyle, thank you, you can...
You know who I am now. And I have with me the proposed manager of record and the proposed sole officer and director, Mr. Henry D. Champagne goes by Hank. I am pleased to say that nothing with Tudor House Liquors is going to change. It's going to, the business is going to be as usual, and they're going to continue to be the great partner that they have been with the, with the town of East Long Meadow for as long as they have. Really, this is a change of ownership, and Henry Hank has been working there for the past 14 years. He's been the vice president, he's been the secretary of the corporation, he's been intricate in the management of the day-to-day operations for all these years. He is going to be purchasing 50, the 50% ownership interest that Ms. Karen Cantor currently owns. And he's going to be getting the other 50% from his father as part of his, a gift to him. The purchase price is $270,000. He's going to be borrowing the money from both his brother and his father in order to finance the acquisition. He's going to be the sole officer, sole director, sole shareholder. And Mr. Champagne has been a great manager all these years and hopes to continue the same business model and business plan that he's been, been going, that has been going on for all these years. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. At this point, the, the public has an opportunity to ask questions. And if someone wants to ask a question, we, I ask that you come to the table and identify yourself and direct your remarks to the chair and not to anyone in the audience or the applicant. After the public has had an opportunity to weigh in, then the council may do the same and ask any questions. So that said, is there anyone in the audience who has a question or needs a clarification on this application for change of manager? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the council?
So, procedural question, as I had mentioned before, the liquor license goes with the corporation, from what I can see. So the corporation actually holds the liquor license?
Correct.
So anytime the corporation changes any officers, adds or subtracts, you come back through the town?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we have to go through the AVCC as well for all of that.
Otherwise, you could literally just slip someone else in there without, okay.
Correct.
Just making sure, that's all. I mean, it's a concern, obviously, and...
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion for this request.
So I'll make a motion if you'd like. I believe it's under a, approved the change of manager, change of officer/director, LLC managers, and change of stock interest for the Tudor House Discount Liquor Incorporated, 161 Shaker Road.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Continued good luck.
Very complete application.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Amazing what the state makes you do.
I know.
Anything and everything was in there.
Okay, and now, we can move, oh, no, we can't. We're being way too efficient.
There weren't enough questions.
Okay, do we want to, I think if we pick up where we left off, five minutes is probably not going to be enough.
Can I take a five-minute recess?
I'll entertain a motion to take a quick five-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will be back at 6:45. Thank you. Determining the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2020. Counselors from the left, our Counselor Richards, Page, Anderson, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. I'll ask the clerk to read the notice into the record, please.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, that the East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 12, 2019, at 6:45 p.m. in the media room at the East Long Meadow Council on Aging, 328 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. 01028. The purpose of this public hearing will be on the issue of determining the percentages of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year 2020. All interested East Long Meadow taxpayers are welcome to attend this hearing to present any oral or written comments on this matter. In the event a taxpayer is unable to attend the hearing, written comments may be submitted in advance to Ms. Kathleen G. Hill, Town Council President, 60 Center Square, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, 01028. Jeanie Quagletti, Town Clerk, Clerk of the Council.
Thank you. And now the applicant, which is our Board of Assessors, Mr. Grudgen, Ms. Cadini, and Mr. Johnson, and our Director of Assessing, Diane Bishop, will join us now and give their presentation.
Bishop Grudgen. Just for the record.
What's that?
Bishop Grudgen.
Bishop Grudgen.
Just copying you guys.
Oh, gotcha.
Thanks for having us another year. Diane and I were, have been together all day as we were in Boston today for eight hours defending one of our fair tax assessments today. So it's been a long day. Just to discuss our values, our residential values went up about 3% this year, commercial and industrial went up a little bit, and condominiums went down about 1%. So it's been a continual rise in the increase in values for the town. And we have a prepared classification paper that hopefully I'll leave out.
We do?
Very, very well done.
So I usually just try to run through it very quickly, knowing that you've had an opportunity to look at it. One thing I always stress is the tax rate that is proposed in here is not a tax rate that has been approved by the Department of Revenue. And tonight, the Town Council will be making a decision if we're going to have a single tax rate or a split tax rate. They also have the ability to vote a residential exemption and a small commercial exemption, and we will explain how or if it would actually benefit our community. If you go to your fiscal year 2020 tax rate calculation sheet, we always start off with the levy limit from the prior year. And by law, we are allowed to add 2.5% and any new growth that we picked up for new construction during the fiscal 19. Our new growth number came in at $473,094. So that brings our new levy limit for FY '20 to $44,321,187. We're also able to include any of the debt exclusion. So with the debt exclusion, and the debt exclusion is things like the public safety radio update, the library construction, school modules, and the middle school, that adds a little bit more to it. So our total levy limit, including our debt, is $44,947,312. That is the maximum that we can spend through raising and appropriating. And once we have calculated the information, the recalc, recap, we are under the levy limit due to the very good budgeting of the town, the Town Council, and everyone involved, we're under our levy limit by $2,114,549. So that is very, very great news to hear because if we did spend up to the actual top levy, our tax rate would be much higher. We are proposing with the information that is all on our recap sheet that our tax rate will be, if we had one tax rate for all classes of property, $20.84 per thousand. We were at $20.55 per thousand. So it is a small increase, but it is, I think, a doable increase for the services that we are providing. So now, the Town Council will have to make a decision if they want to shift some of the burden away from the residential properties and to the commercial, industrial, and personal property. And you would be able to look, when you're looking at the summary of tax rate option sheet, that we have it broken out in 5% increments. When you get to the maximum amount, which is a factor of 1.5, a residential home would maybe save $2.33, where the commercial, industrial, and personal property would be paying an additional $10.42. So we have to weigh what is in the best interest of our community. Our average single-family home is assessed at $278,800. If we shifted the maximum of that 50% to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, a single-family home could save us much as $650 per year. If we shifted the average commercial and industrial property, which on an average is $786,900, they would see almost an $8,200 increase in tax bill. So those are considerations that the board would have to decide upon. I do have a historical perspective, and it shows how our tax rate has been over the last 10 years and how the levy capacity for each residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property. You will see that our community is 83% residential with 17% remaining for the commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. We also have neighboring town comparisons, and you will find that we kind of fall right in the middle of all of them, some of them higher, some of them lower. But we try to take Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Ludlow, South Hadley, and Delchertown as comparable communities to us, and you will see how we fall in that.
Wilbraham went up 58 cents for this.
So I don't know if anyone would have a question before I jump into the residential, or if you'd like me just to continue with the, the last two potential...
Because it's a public hearing, you have to finish the presentation, and then the audience weighs in before the council can...
Perfect. So there is something that is called a residential exemption. And a residential exemption will still, the residential properties still will have to pay a lump sum of money. It'll just get shifted amongst the properties. So it, you're not going to gain any more, or you're not going to lose any more, but the more expensive, higher-priced homes, or any homes that are rental properties, would end up shifting to a higher tax rate, and the older, smaller, lower homes would be shifting downwards. But the residential tax, whatever the amount is that we need to collect, is what we're going to collect. It just gets shifted amongst that one class. There are only nine, I'm sorry, 1916?
16.
16, sorry, I saw fiscal 19, and my mind went to that. In fiscal 19, there are only 16 communities that have adopted this. And if you look at the communities, they are more towards Boston area where there's a lot of rentals, or the Cape where people have more investment homes. So you would want to give the benefit to the people who are living in the home and living in their community. That doesn't really fall. In our situation, we are mostly owner-occupied, single-family homes. Going into small commercial exemptions, that's another option. The way that we learn who may qualify is the commissioner does provide us a confidential list of any business that has 10 employees or less. If you have a business, a building, and it has four different tenants, one tenant may qualify. Maybe all four tenants would qualify. It doesn't go to the tenant, doesn't help them, it only helps the person who owns the actual building. So they possibly could get a little less of a tax burden. actual building, so they possibly could get a little less of a tax burden. Again, for commercial, it just gets shifted between the commercial, industrial properties. So if we had a set dollar amount, it's just shifting between actual property owners. There are only 15 communities in FY19 who has adopted a small commercial exemption, and out of approximately 374 properties, there's a possibility that 65 properties could possibly get a small commercial exemption. They would actually have to prove to us that every tenant in their building actually meets the qualifications. So that is what we have, and I don't know if there's any questions of us, the Board, or I'll leave it to you.
Thank you. First, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question or speak this evening? Yes, so you could please come up to the front and identify yourself, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Christopher Buendo. I'm a local property owner, and I'm here on behalf of the East of the River Five-Town Chamber of Commerce, which is our local Chamber of Commerce. I'm going to read some prepared remarks. Thank you. The ERC5 represents businesses throughout East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, Ludlow, and Ludlow. Our request is that we would like to start by thanking this Board for your support of a single tax rate, as has been the case in the past, and we ask the Select Board to keep the tax rate at a factor of one, a single tax rate for business and residential. The reasons not to split the rate are as follows: Businesses continue to struggle with rocketing healthcare costs and the new pressures that will be incurred due to the Commonwealth's Grand Bargain, which is the new FMLA Act and the Minimum Wage Act. Generally, a split rate is not recommended until the business base exceeds 20% or more. I think you said we're at about 17% right now. Commercial properties do not use as many town resources as residential properties, like police, fire, schools, trash, et cetera. We certainly use those when needed, and we thank you for that. Businesses generally support the community through donations and contributions to schools, sports, seniors, charities, and more. The greater the tax burden, the more money goes to taxes, and the less money available to support the community. So basically, I am here simply representing the East of the River Five-Town Chamber. We would love it if you would keep a single tax rate, please. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing itself and ask if the council has any questions.
Do we know the number of rentals we currently have in town?
Residential?
Residential.
No, we do not. Right now, we only get deeds that show who owns the property, and there's really no way of knowing until somebody comes in and they can't match names with property addresses. Usually, it's through the town clerk's office as they're trying to figure out. That's the only way that we find out. So I would not have that knowledge.
Could you be chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question on a split tax rate. How would that apply to, like, say, home offices? Would you have to go into every house that had applied for a home office permit and calculate out the percentage being used by a business and the percentage being used by residential?
So I believe with a home office, that would be different than a commercial entity. So a home office, they have, it's my understanding, the right to use their property, but they cannot be having customers, they can't hang a sign, that type of thing. So they're actually utilizing their space, and they can get a special permit of some sort through building and planning in order to legally be able to use a room in their home. We do have what we call mixed-use properties, and we have probably about 50 of them where they are part residential, they'll have a home on the property, but they also have a component of commercial. All of those properties would then end up, for whatever their percentage is, just say it's a 50/50, you'd have 50% of the value based at one rate and 50% of the value based at a commercial rate. So it also does apply to personal property accounts for anyone who has a personal property. They would not keep a single tax rate, they would go with the commercial. It also affects people who are in agricultural, horticultural, forest management, because that's also considered a mixed-use property.
Sounds like a lot more work.
Yeah, for a home business, the residential code for single families, 101, if you had a home business, we're not going to change the code of the 101, so it'll stay residential.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Just a detailed question. This $20.84, you just chose that out of the air?
Absolutely, dartboard, no.
You're not trying to lead us, are you?
Yeah. So after all of the budget was put together, then the Municipal Finance Director, Sarah Menard, and myself, we start inputting all of the figures into the tax recaps. So we get money from the state, we owe money to the state, we took money from free cash, we did money from raising appropriate, we have enterprise funds. So we're able to fund a lot of services, and at the same time, with the increase in values, as we all know, the values of our real estate has been edging up little by little, with the increase in values and with the Town Council really watching the budget and keeping that extra, excess levy capacity, it was able to be kept at $20.84. And again, it has not been approved by the Department of Revenue, but unless there is some unforeseen large item that we missed, but most of the times we have looked, I check Sarah's, Sarah checks mine, the Board of Assessors have reviewed, I think we're pretty good.
Anyone else? Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, just a couple comments. Actually, 2084 is pretty good. Yeah, you were thinking about 2137 or something of that nature, so...
We were thinking over, well, you guys were telling us over a dollar something, so 29 cents, 29 cent increase is great.
It is.
Like I said, Wilbraham went up 58 cents, but we're not sure about Long Meadow yet. You know, we look at the other towns, so 29 cent increase should be very happy, town people should be happy about it, too.
And again, people have to realize, too, you know, we're dealing with, you know, some of these unfunded mandates, you know, like minimum wage, that impacts contracts. So, you know, the state goes out and does good things, and all of a sudden, who's paying for it? But just kind of like, just another sidebar as well, before the council, this form of government and the charter kicked in, the rates were going up appreciably under the previous form of government. I mean, we were at 2112 in fiscal year 2016, and then, you know, and then, under the new form with, you know, all this collective scrutiny, went down to 2077, 2094, the current year, well, past year 2055, and now likely for the current fiscal year 2084. So I think, you know, just those are the things that don't make the media, and I wish they did. So media, if you're out there watching...
Anything else from the council? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve that the Town of East Long Meadow adopt for fiscal year 2020 tax rate a factor of one, a single tax rate with no residential or small commercial exemptions.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Wasn't there something that we had to do before we approved the tax rate? Was there other financial matters?
We're not approving the tax rate, we're approving a tax factor of one. Right.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep. Okay, where did I leave off? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Chris.
There is a document that at the end of the evening, Jeannie will pass that does need to be signed, the LA5 attesting to the vote.
And we all sign that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening. And Diane, this presentation packet, that can go up on the website for folks to see? Thank you. Okay. This is a long meeting tonight. We can continue in order. We are under Licensing Matters Number Four, and this is a discussion of the status of the liquor license for GRC Incorporated doing business as Figaro. Good evening. Mr. Riley?
Kelly.
Kelly.
Daniel Kelly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thinking of somebody else, and I know you are Daniel Kelly.
I represent...
And Mr. Cuello.
Mr. Cuello. We received your letter, we understand the questions that you have, and thanks for having us in. Perhaps I could just kind of give you an overview of where we are, and that'd be helpful, and have some follow-up questions. As you are aware, the property is for sale, the property and business are for sale. We've entered into a purchase and sale agreement. Negotiations took the better, it's a large deal, there's a lot of property up there, and the negotiations dragged on for the course of the summer, but we did sign a purchase and sale agreement in September, the most recent one is in September. There've been a couple of changes to it, and that involves also the transfer of the liquor license to the new people. They're going to operate it as a restaurant. The new people are based out of Boston. I know the attorney's actually been out to East Long Meadow and has been at the Town Hall and kind of is doing his due diligence. They're in the process of doing that now. He's hopeful that he'll have his, and the liquor license typically, the way it works is the purchaser does the transfer paperwork for the most part. We've given him our information, he's hopeful that he can get it, he's telling you by the end of this month to you, and I understand that would probably put him on sometime in January, possibly, given your, you know, your schedule for a transfer hearing. With that in mind, we began the process, and I submitted a complete application for renewal. I sent it out last week to your town. You got it? Yes, thank you. And you guys are among, I probably go in front of a half dozen to a dozen boards over the course of a year. When you can call the town clerk and she picks up right away and says, "Hold on a second, you've been here looking up your file," it's an unbelievable experience. So I still thought you know that, I'm sure you already know that. So that's kind of where we are. We understand there's been some hiccups with getting it renewed. Quite frankly, we were unsure whether or not they were going to have to file renewal because they thought maybe the purchase and sale would take a little quicker, they'd get the transfer filed. Obviously, it did not happen out of abundance of caution. I mean, the major component of the purchase is the liquor license. Well, without the liquor license, there wouldn't be a purchase. The property and liquor licenses are being sold separately, but they're together. The property won't be sold until the ABCC signs off on it, if you should sign off on it first. So that's why that liquor license renewal is important to us. So they don't have any plans to, they will not be reopening. Their plan is to sell it, to go through with the sale, and hopeful that the application for transfer will be filed soon, and you'll look favorably upon it.
I would simply say to you, it's not the intent of the council, local licensing authority, to have to pocket a license because it hasn't been used and knowingly disrupt a sale. So that's why we asked for this meeting tonight, so that we could understand if there was a sale in the works, because to take back the license destroys Mr. Cuello's ability to market the property. I think we all get that. So I'm going to ask our clerk, what did you receive that we, do we have to act on something soon?
Well, I received renewal. I sent all the renewals to all the establishments for the renewal for 2020, and I just received it in the mail today. So there was, there were no food permits taken since 2018, so that was an issue and a concern of...
We filed with the application, we have the condition precedent to get that, the inspection with the health is a week from tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
And they're in the process of scheduling with, with your building department. They don't have a firm date, but the health is a firm date of a week from Wednesday.
Okay, so I would ask the local licensing authority, renewals for common vic, entertainment, do those go out, too? Because I was told that you're not operating, so you're not going to get the common vic or the entertainment, so I'm not sure. I'd like direction on that. What do we do with those renewals? Do we send them out with the liquor licenses, too, or do we...
Well, I will certainly defer to whatever decision you make, but I can tell you, you know, as a practical matter, while the liquor license will be transferred by this board, the new owner will have to come in, and you really can't transfer common vic entertainment, so I don't think it makes sense.
It's a transferable license we should be dealing with.
So I would not send out the renewals?
That would be my preference. I'll certainly defer to whatever your decision is, but we're not going to use it, and you don't transfer those anyways.
No, right, they have to, the new owner would have to come in and ask for those.
Okay, because I actually have them here just in case, but I wanted to ask that question while you were here.
We'll do whatever you, whatever you prefer.
I would prefer just to deal with the transfer with the new owner.
Right.
That makes sense.
Likewise.
And the rest, that individual or individuals...
So accept the renewal with the proper paperwork that I had, I just opened it up like an hour or two ago, so, and then hold off on everything else?
Yes.
And have the new owner apply for the common vic as a new application?
Yep.
I'll have a question through the chair.
Mike, and then, Ralph.
Do you have any anticipated closing date based upon the success of the transfers?
It's going to, it's going to depend on when we can get, when he can get it filed and get in front of you. You're the, actually, you're the crucial point of the transfer. Once you approve it, ABCC will approve it. You know, you are kind of the biggest approval hurdle to get over. Once ABCC approves it, we're going to close within 10 days.
Thank you.
So either late December or early January, you're in that timeframe?
Yes, I know they thought that it would be tough to, even if they filed it this month, it'd be tough, given your schedule with the holidays to gain before you by the end of this year. That's why we did the renewal, so we're figuring that the transfer will be here in front of you, probably in January.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, so I was thinking the same thing about the special permit.
Yeah. You are aware that as a restaurant, they're required to be under special permit before the agreement?
I am, and I've told Attorney Appleheim, the buyer's attorney, that.
He was in the office a couple months ago, visiting my office, planning, building, just to get all of his ducks in a row, so he's done all that homework, I believe, already, attorney for the purchase.
So he must be in the works with the planning board, then?
He tells me that, he tells me that he'll be filing everything at once.
Okay, fair.
So through the chair, new licensing issues, especially the establishments, the liquor I didn't think we could renew a license for a business that wasn't operating, and that's in essence what they're asking us to do, and then they'll have to renew again if the sale's not taking place until after the beginning of the year.
Well, you have the discretion to renew any license.
So with that, how many licenses do we have available for restaurants for liquor to hand out?
Zero. We're allotted 17, is it?
I believe.
Seventeen?
There's only one available license in town, and it's for beer and wine off-premise.
That's correct.
We're maxed out on all the other quotas that the state gives us. It's based on the population of your town. So the type of license Mr. Cuello has is all alcohol.
Right.
To be served on premises.
But it's a common vic, you're...
That's a whole separate thing, yeah.
Okay.
That's just to be able to serve food, but any applicant, the new owner would have to get that. There's no benefit to Mr. Cuello asking for that for, you know, 2020.
I mean, this isn't something, though, that we typically allow someone to hold on to a license when they're not operating. I mean, is that accurate?
It is a similar situation to his qualities.
And again, I'm asking for more knowledge purposes than anything.
We would be faced, if Mr. Cuello didn't have a buyer of record, we would be faced with deciding whether or not to allow him to keep it, or we, what the ABCC allows is to, we take it back, which means pocketing it. At that point, he has a property to sell, but he has, the value in that property is the availability of the license. So it is our discretion to...
So we're looking at renewing with the understanding that it's not going to reopen...
Well, if we don't, if we don't renew it, the license isn't live so that it can be transferred. That's how I would look at it.
They would have to apply for it after 1/1.
Right.
The 2019 license would die at 12:31 in 2019, so you would have to hope that nobody's knocking on the door for a alcohol license.
And that's the risk.
It's a small risk, but it's a risk. In my experience with the ABCC, they would defer this decision to the local licensing authority. They have a lot of power on the local level.
Yeah.
Okay, Kathy, if the license is renewed, it's renewed, it's an active alcohol license.
Yes, but he would also have to get the food permit?
So that's what I'm saying, so he couldn't have special functions...
Nothing, no.
Separate from the restaurant. Separate from the restaurant.
Correct.
Okay.
And again, if, let's say he renews it, you come in tomorrow, you renew it, that way there, you know it's active, and the sale's not going to take place until next year, he's going to have to renew it by December 31st again.
Right, that's what he's, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, I think that satisfies the council or the licensing authority, just because we needed that status.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the information.
And when I hear a more firm date of the filing of the transfer, I'll communicate to your town.
Sure.
Perfect.
I do anticipate it by the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good night.
Okay, now we move to financial matters, and we have some business to take care of under number one, where in May of 28th of this year, when we approved the, all of the appropriations for the budget for FY '20, we did so by naming a particular funding source, and unfortunately, it was the wrong name attached to it, and this, it was not intentional on anyone's part that it was named incorrectly. So we have to rescind that vote in order to take a vote to name the funding source In your packet, there was an explanation that our finance director provided that I think clarifies for us the, how the DOR requires us to go forward to use these funds, but it has to be according to their rulebook. And especially for the viewers, there is no, doing what we have to do this evening has no impact on any of the tax rate or money that we have to move from one place to another. So that said, we have to rescind a vote where we raised and appropriated for general fund capital projects, and we voted to appropriate that from the MGM Casino Mitigation Fund for $55,000. And again, that was incorrectly stated, so I will, unless somebody has a question, entertain that motion so that we can remove that from the books.
I move to rescind the vote of May 28th, 2019, made to raise and appropriate for general fund capital projects to be paid from the MGM Casino Mitigation Funds, $55,000.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Concurrent with that now is to, a motion to change the funding source for the Pine Knoll Upper Lot Paving Capital Project. And this goes hand in hand with what we just rescinded, so I'll entertain a motion there as well.
I'll move to change the funding source for the Pine Knoll Upper Lot Paving Project, originally approved on May 28th, 2019, for $55,000 from MGM Casino Mitigation Fund to raise and appropriate.
Motion's...
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, you have a question?
We have discussion.
Yes.
I did want to point out again for the public that the MGM Casino Mitigation Funds were really technically not available to this body without applying to the state for them. And so by using that term, we were not authorized to use those funds. We have other funds that were in the account already, and those are the funds that we're using for the MGM, for the Pine Knoll Upper Lot Paving.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And in the same vein, we must rescind a vote that the council took on June 11th, again, appropriating funds from the MGM Casino Mitigation Fund of $45,000 to purchase and equip a pickup truck for the police department.
I'll move to rescind the vote of June 11th, 2019, made to vote and appropriate, appropriate from MGM Casino Mitigation Funds, $45,000 to purchase and equip a pickup truck for the police department.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That's successfully rescinded, hand in hand now. We need to identify the proper funding source for the purchase and equipment of that pickup truck for the police department under the capital project, so...
That being said, I move to change the funding source for the purchase and, for the purchase and equipment of a pickup truck for the police department capital project, originally approved on June 11, 2019, for $45,000 from MGM Casino Mitigation Fund to raise and appropriate.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just a question to the chair. Do we need to state, rather than use the term raise and appropriate, it's coming from the impact, the community impact, casino impact?
No, I don't believe it is.
The money goes in the general fund.
That money goes into the general fund. Our finance director's in the audience, and I would ask for clarification on that.
Yes, the money, when it was received, it was the surrounding community's agreement money, but that is general fund revenue, so the only way to spend from that is a raise and appropriate. Essentially, it's going into your free cash that then you ultimately are using, so it's the same net thing, but those are the terms, the terminology that we need to use.
So the raise and appropriate is in reality from the general fund?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. And Sarah, thank you for that explanation as well, this one and the one that you sent by email. Okay, we can move to old business, and this evening we have our fire chief with us to continue a discussion on the request for a second ambulance. Thank you for your patience. In leading 90 minutes?
I'll wait.
You'll wait forever?
Yeah. I come before you, and again, thank you for having me back in. I left several weeks back, hoping to be back a little sooner. It took a little longer to get some numbers put together. I worked with Mary, kind of brought her up to speed, her being relatively new in August and getting thrown into the fire with this. She wanted to make sure...
No pun intended.
Right. No pun intended. I mean, she wanted to make sure that she understood the project, understood where we've been, where we're going, and I think she did her homework, and I think she understands my proposal. I sent it out, I actually went through it with President Hill over a week and a half ago now, made a couple of changes that she had suggested to the proposal, and I make sure you guys got it plenty of times, and hopefully you've had a chance to review it. Basically, we're looking to purchase that second ambulance. It's still, it's still around a 270-day lead time, so now we're looking at it probably end of July, getting it serviced some point in August. And at the same time, we're looking to, which is not part of tonight's discussion, but I proposed a budget like Councilman Anderson had asked for, for my next year's budget. It is a draft budget, but it shows a projection, a conservative projection of what our revenue will be at the time I go to submit my final budget. So we would be asking for at that point, one and a half new firefighters, one to start July 1st and one to start January 1st. And the dates, depending on when the academy starts, stuff like that may change a little bit, but it would not be before either one of those dates. And also move one of my current firefighters that's on the fire payroll to the EMS ambulance revenue fund. That ultimately saves the fire budget about a 2% because there are some contractual changes, stuff's happening next year in the fireside, but it drops that budget down a little bit. And if you look at some of the numbers for the FY '21 revenue brought in, I hope I can move much more of that budget over and try and keep it in line with what our plan is to help fund, with the ambulance revenue, help fund some of the fire department operation and knock it down and take it off the tax rolls and put it towards the revenue stream that we see as not going down but going up. It's just, it's just a busy time. The need, the needs is crucial. We have mutual aid, mutual aid partners would be great. We have more mutual aid partners, but we still have that 10-minute minimum, if it's Long Meadow coming to town, and it's longer than that, it's 15 minutes, 25 minutes, and even longer. If your loved one's laying on the ground and you're standing there, and anxieties building, and if we have the ability to do it and have that second ambulance and make it work, we would really appreciate it.
We have a very detailed packet that the chief has provided us with...
I have a question, too, with you.
Nice visuals in it. Yes, of course.
Mary, I understand you spent an elaborate amount of time going through the proposal. What's your status?
Thanks. I did. The chief's correct. We've got to be very friendly with each other discussing this topic. And I think, I have to give him a lot of praise because I know there's an enormous amount of work and detail represented in this package that he presented for you. My major concern in the beginning was the initial number of five new employees that were requested when we first, well, when I first started to become familiar with this. And now, as the chief represents, there's only one and a half full-time equivalent employees, and those are in fiscal '21. The other key component, I think, is that we're paying other communities that do the ALS intercepts now. I think one of the first points you made in your presentation was that last year was over $50,000 that we had to pay out to other providers for that ALS service. So that will go away because we'll be providing the service ourselves, and then we'll be able to provide other communities potentially with some mutual aid that we can't do now. And probably most importantly is the public service, the public safety service aspect in that we'll now have two, well, soon, hopefully, have two ambulances on site. Response times will be exponentially improved, and the revenue sourcing, it's all conjecture because, but the chief's numbers are based on the statistics from the last year or six month period, and extrapolated from there as to what the revenue will be. I think they are conservative. You've just used the numbers as you know them to be, and chances are with our aging population and risk takers, there'll probably be a lot of ambulance calls and hopefully nothing too serious. But in any event, it generates an enormous amount of revenue that we're kind of just letting go by the by in the absence of that second ambulance. So I recommend that you favorably consider this because I know the detail that has gone into it, and I think the analysis financially and operationally is very sound.
Through the chair, please. Also, if we take into effect the building down at the end of Maple Street with the skill centers being developed right now, and we know we're looking at the possibilities of something happening in the 330 Chestnut Street, those numbers are only going to move north. And you also have to look at this ambulance being down for service, maintenance, having to take it out, or being on calls and not having a backup. So every time another ambulance comes into town and takes one of those calls from us, it's revenue that we're leaving off the table that can offset those fire department costs going forward. So I just want to thank you for the time you put into this because you filled the voids and all the unanswered questions that I at least had, and make it very easy to come up with an educated decision, so thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Beryl.
You did a great job in defending your request for interference. The calls are there. I agree. I think it's important that we say yes to that piece. The staffing piece, you asked for five now, with one and a half, and then you're pulling one from the fire department?
Basically, they all work the ambulance. I'm pulling his salary range because we can afford it, and I can, I can show a little bit of reduction in the fire budget, which is, I think, ultimately provide the best service and try and help offset some costs from the fire side of it, was the council and the fire department's original goal to start. So if I can, in the future, will we need more firefighters? Time will tell. We're going to see how the operation goes with the one and a half.
So it's actually one and a half, not two and a half?
Well, the reason it's one, the reason, well, it's one and a half new firefighters.
Okay. So that's why it was confusing. Sometimes you were dealing with one and a half, and then all of a sudden...
Right.
We're talking two and a half, and so...
So in the budget, in the budget, there is the salary for the firefighter. That salary used to be on the fire budget.
Right.
But he's our, so he's already an employee of the town. So we are, we're already experiencing that. So that's not a new employee for the town. The only new employee is the one that starts July 1st and works the whole year, and the one that starts January 1st and works half the year.
So you're comfortable with this adjustment in your staffing?
I think, after, after meeting with the council and after talking with council members individually, I think this is a good compromise, and it actually shows us, it'll show us where our weak points are if we need to come back. We may not need to come back. If we can fit that impact schedule with that one firefighter, take the busy time, and that one firefighter allows us to do what we need to do, and we don't have to come back in, it's a great way to make that first jump as opposed to putting the five on and then coming back and saying, you know what, we really didn't need them, and now I need to talk about, you know, laying people off.
So with the exception of one firefighter, all of your staff on both sides are firefighter, paramedic-trained?
Firefighter, EMT, or paramedic.
EMT, or, or...
Or paramedic, right.
Okay, okay.
Any new hires are, need to be, become, either if they're not, they need to be in the program and then become a paramedic. And I have one current firefighter that's not an EMT, and everybody else is an EMT, and one of them is currently in the process. He'll be a paramedic probably May, May-July, so...
So do you rotate between departments to keep people's skill levels up?
Do I rotate?
Well, I mean, or do you primarily keep the ambulance people on the ambulance side of the station and the firefighters?
Oh, no, they're cross-trained.
Okay, well, I knew they were, but I didn't know...
It's been a little challenging at the beginning, just because when we started that ALS piece of it, we did it much more easier before we were running the paramedic level. Now we're on a paramedic level, it's a little more challenging, but we try to keep them in, if there's two on duty, we try to keep them to, a 12-hour shift up to 24-hour shift so they don't get overburdened. I have one shift that runs a little light right now, but we're constantly working with him and talking to him about whipping up, and he's loving the busyness. I mean, some of them, and it is, it is a burnout issue, and Dr. Beltran, our medical director, understands how we're operating, and he, he's watching it, and he's, but he likes what we're doing right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just have two minor questions, but my first comment is, again, this is one of the best presentations I've seen any department head do in town.
Thank you.
And I commend you for that, really.
Thank you very much.
There's a lot of information in here, and it certainly helps us make an informed decision. With that said, I just have two minor comments. The OPEP funding for the two new firefighters is anticipated to be paid out of the ambulance fund.
So that might be a better...
That's the one and a half we're talking about.
Right, that might be a better, Sarah question, exactly where the money is. The revenue, it's built into the budget for the revenue, but I don't think you'd see it in the line item for that budget, and I think maybe Sarah might throw some...
Sure, please.
Throw some help in that direction.
Yes, so the OPEP will be paid essentially from the ambulance fund when we do have to pay that. So as of right now, if you hire the people tomorrow, for example, they still have to be fully vested before we actually have that liability. they still have to be fully vested before we actually have that liability incur. So we will be saving it in the ambulance fund and we will be making our contributions relating to that. So what will happen is like what I do now is when I submit our census information for the actuary to look at and therefore determine our contribution, I can segregate by departments, which is what I do for the enterprise funds and I will have a separate one for ambulance. So then we will know of our obligation, how much relates to that. So we will be able to always know that difference and be able to fund appropriately.
Through the, through that account, we'll be able to look at the line items being spent from that and this will be one of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. The second one was just a minor question. You indicated the movement of vehicles. It looks like they were going to fit. But with the addition of, you know, one and a half, really that's two people for bedding purposes?
So one of them's not going to, one of them won't be sleeping because he'll be working the impact shift. So that'll be either an eight-hour shift a day or a twelve-hour shift for a certain period of time. So they won't be there on the overnight. I don't anticipate the overnight being where the impact's going to be. So he won't be sleeping and there is, the other one would be just the fifth person on that group and there is plenty of lockers hand bedding for the five per group.
Okay. So you don't anticipate the need for any additional space?
No additional space, no additional modifications at this point.
Okay. And the vehicle that's being moved outside, I'm assuming is?
No vehicles being moved outside. So where my car parks now, if you look on the, it's page six of the plan, my car is actually parked in door eight currently. In rescue two, the second ambulance would park there because that's where the exhaust system's already pre-connected. In door seven, which the bays are wide enough, so my, it would be my car and car two would be parked in that bay. And so they fit.
Somebody?
I have another question. I did get a couple of calls from residents and I was trying to explain it the best I can because when you use the terminology one and a half employees, it gets a little bit confusing.
Yep.
First of all, one and a half employees is not one employee and one part-time employee.
Correct.
It, it, both these employees will be in the twenty-twenty budget.
For the full year, correct.
And it will turn into two employees when you get into twenty-twenty-one if they both survive this because it won't be in a half-year transition.
Right.
It'll be a full year.
It'll be a full year. Yep.
Okay. Now everybody knows.
Okay.
Other questions? I'll entertain a motion. We don't have one written because we weren't sure how the discussion would go.
So we're voting strictly on the second ambulance. We're not voting on?
We're authorizing the.
Purchase.
The purchase.
Least purchase.
The lease purchase.
And equipment.
And equipment for a second ambulance. We don't have to do anything around the people.
No, the people part you don't have to do. It does need to say out of the ambulance fund.
Okay.
And therefore to increase the budget for that ambulance fund to accommodate that. So it's you're approving the project as well as the funding source for it. Does that make sense to everybody?
It does, but I don't remember all that. Repeat it.
Actually.
Good, Dan.
Yeah, let me, what's the dollar amount? Two hundred and something thousand?
No, thank you. One thirty-five, one fifty-nine point five seven.
One thirty-five, one fifty-nine?
Point seven.
Point fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
One fifty-seven point, that's it?
Just say one sixty to beat.
One fifty-nine.
Just say one sixty? Okay.
Fifty-seven. But through the chair, that was to be paid out of the ambulance fund.
Correct. That's what Sarah's saying.
That's why she needs to, right.
All right. So we'll see if I can do it on the fly. I'll make a motion to approve the amount of a hundred and fifty, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty, one hundred and thirty-five, one fifty-nine and fifty-seven cents out of the ambulance fund. That's a specific name for it. For purposes of entering into a lease purchase agreement by the East Long Meadow Fire Department to purchase a second ambulance. Did I miss anything?
And equipment.
And equipment.
And equipment.
Thank you.
And to increase the budget accordingly.
And to increase the budget accordingly.
What budget, again?
The ambulance fund budget.
Because your current year budget, you had already used it all, so you still need to approve.
We already budgeted it all. We didn't use it all.
It's earmarked. It's already earmarked. So for your FY twenty, if you approve the project, then you need to increase the budget for it because it's one of those funds like the enterprise funds that you have to approve. You have to approve both. It's not like the general fund where you get to approve one. Does that make sense?
I'm going to second that motion.
What he said.
Yeah.
For purposes of discussion.
For purposes of discussion.
So what I, what I hear Sarah saying through the chair is that I believe that we have to put it in the budget even though the income is already there or will be there from the ambulance fund.
Yes.
We need to still put it in the budget.
Correct.
Correct.
That was my concern.
Yeah. Because this type of fund, the money already has to be there before you can make a vote from it. So the money is there, so absolutely you can do that.
And I have another question and that would be, do we not have to authorize the purchase of the ambulance itself?
The lease purchase.
Which is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand or something as opposed to just authorizing this payment? Because if we're signing a lease, we're signing a lease for multiple years. I'm, I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned about the propriety of the motion.
I know when we did the lease on, actually two separate lease companies, on the first ambulance and on the ladder truck, the lease company wants the minutes from this meeting that says the governing body approved the lease purchase.
Of the vehicle.
Of the, of the vehicle and equipment.
Should we rework the motion to authorize whatever the three hundred something thousand dollars?
I believe.
However, with the first installment being paid in the fiscal twenty-twenty budget? Would that be a better way to do it?
Right here.
Yes.
That's the total amount.
It's three ninety-one, right?
If the chief needs that for the vendor.
Right.
Which I would think is under one.
Yeah, you're authorized to enter into the lease, which, for it, but we don't have four hundred thousand in addition in our, in our fund right now. So you've got to be careful you're not approving that.
I think. We also committed to fiscal twenty-twenty-one, fiscal twenty-twenty-two. Do we need that in the motion now for?
I, I think if you commit to a three-year to purchase, to purchase and, to lease purchase the ambulance for the one thirty-five, one sixty for.
A year for three years.
For each year for three years, that.
Will solve the problem?
Right.
Except you don't want me, us to approve it for fiscal twenty-twenty-one and twenty-two.
Right.
By entering into the agreement.
Right.
I think we cover that or not.
Separate, can we separate the two? Can we just vote to authorize the chief to sign the contract to purchase the vehicle for three hundred and ninety-one thousand? And then as a separate vote, vote the hundred and, what is it, seventy-five?
For the lease payment?
For the payment for the one year.
Yeah, then the first one could be construed as a, that we have approved to do it right now.
Right.
The full amount. I think us, we have to tweak that language a little bit.
I'm pretty sure we had just said to enter into a lease agreement and that we didn't say the total cost of.
Three-year lease agreement.
Of the, but that we had said that because each year is still continuing on appropriation and you can't appropriate yet for those other years yet. So I think by saying that you're authorizing the purchase in general, but that you're only authorizing X amount to be spent in this current year.
Which is all we can do.
Yeah. Which I believe is pretty much what you said.
I believe that's what your first motion was.
To enter into the agreement, but I just want to make sure that, you know, the motion's clear that the entire agreement isn't for one thirty-five. That's the expenditure that we're authorizing.
For the first year.
For the first year.
For fiscal twenty.
Right. And this is a, maybe, you know, this is a three-year agreement.
Yes.
Do I need to reword it or are we all set?
I was just going to say.
Could you read it back to us?
Jackie, you got on that?
Could you, could you read it back to us in the form, current form? It's in.
And good luck with that statement.
You're on, Jackie.
Okay. It was to authorize a lease purchase on equipment for one thirty-five, one fifty-nine, fifty-seven out of the ambulance fund for the purpose of?
Yeah, I think I might want to reword it.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll withdraw my motion and, and reword it with the count, with your, your approval. All right. Let me see if I can wing it. All right. I make a motion that the, that we authorize the fire department to enter into a three-year lease purchase agreement for a second ambulance and equipment and to authorize the first year installment payment of an amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents to come from the ambulance fund and to, what's the terminology you want to use?
Increase the fiscal twenty-twenty budget accordingly.
And to increase the fiscal twenty-twenty budget for the ambulance fund accordingly.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a lot cleaner.
Second.
Further discussion. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. That is, that's a very good report. Shop shop report is. Okay.
That's easy for you to say.
And now we are up to the, well, business number two, recommendation of the town council planning matters committee regarding mixed use district bylaw and rezoning of three thirty Chestnut Street from industrial garden park to mixed use. Mr. Anderson?
First of all, I'm going to make a comment. I mean, I love this committee that, you know, this planning matters committee. We have the entire committee here right now, both to my right and in the audience. So.
That's cool.
Bravo, bravo. The next, the next meeting will be next Monday, the eighteenth at ten-thirty at the school committee meeting room at the high school. Work is going on, you know, it's a, you know, we're right now in the second pass review of the proposal from the planning board. And we're getting this more of the, you know, more of the details, but things are moving, moving pretty well. But we are nowhere near ready for a recommendation, but hopefully sooner than later.
Good. Thank you. Moving on to new business, general bylaw three point zero two zero D regarding a special audit of the town clerk's office as of the last day of employment. And I think, Mr. Page, you brought this to our attention?
I did. As, as it would be noted, I was browsing through our general bylaws one evening in regards to E-code and I came across this. It basically says when employment is terminated or they're no longer employed by the town, there's a couple of positions that the town will do an audit. And I wanted to bring it to your attention, to the board's attention. I don't see an issue with doing an audit, which basically would show where we were at when the town clerk left. And that way there, if there was any issues whatsoever, it doesn't reflect bad on the new town clerk coming in. We'll know where we stood at the date that town clerk left and where we stand with the new.
Well, I would agree that it's a prudent practice, prudent business practice. My question would be, I have no idea what an audit of this nature would cost and our funding source.
I'd also want to know, when is our, when are we, when is our next audit due?
Our, we just completed one in September, Jeannie?
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Our annual audit, the one that Sarah's involved in, was done in September. I don't believe there's a management letter yet.
No.
Have, we haven't received that or whatever goes with accompanying documents, but it's due. It's around this time. It would also be, in my eyes, prudent to use a different auditor than the, the firm that has conducted the audit that the DOR requires.
I would agree.
Pat?
I would question Kathy whether we really need to do that in view of the fact that Tom wasn't handling any funds anymore since all the funds were removed from the town clerk's office and go to the.
Well, could this have been because it was collector treasurer?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. It's a vested from the past.
Change the general code because the clerk is not treasurer collector anymore.
Separated out those roles.
Right.
Three years ago.
Well, that could solve our problem very nicely now, couldn't it?
We do collect money, but it's not, you know, daughter licenses, marriage licenses.
You're talking, yeah, minor things.
Under a hundred dollars.
Okay. Through the chair?
Yep.
Three point zero two zero town audits, section D. The town council shall have a special audit made of the books and accounts held by the town treasurer, comma, town clerk, comma, town accountant, comma, director of municipal finance and the collector of taxes as of the last day of employment of any said official. So they divided it out and specifically set out the positions.
However, section A refers to the treasurer, town clerk and collector grouping them together side. I don't know.
Charter commissioner to us.
Actually, under A, town treasurer, comma, town clerk, comma, and collector of taxes.
Three right there.
Like I said, I think what they're saying is if any one of those official leaves, you should have an audit. I, I don't know how extensive an audit they're looking for.
That was going to be my question.
I, I would assume it would be an audit of simply what that person was involved in.
What used to cover the whole time of the employment of the town clerk?
Yes.
Because then there was collector treasurer.
This is a bylaw, right? Not a charter.
This is a general bylaw. And I think what it is, is to show us where we are at the time that they leave and just make sure that there was no irregularities. I mean, that, that would be my thought.
Something Sarah can do is just say, here's a, here's a, here's the benchmark for when Tom left and this is what we had and this is, now we have something and we move forward. I mean, I don't think they're meaning to do an audit over fifteen, sixteen years.
I wouldn't think you're doing an audit over sixteen years.
I just think maybe doing an accounting of, okay, here's what's done, here's where we're at and then the new clerk takes over from here, knowing that this is what's there. And I think Sarah could probably do that. Or not.
Just going through an audit, it's not really time sensitive.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the bylaw, three point zero two zero, we, letter C is already in progress. We're waiting on the results from the September audit. The town accountant can give us a year-end balance in B from the town treasurer, but the town treasurer is not an employee that was recently hired. So even though that would have to happen, it's irrelevant to this discussion. And so is A, so. Do we need a legal opinion?
Well, I was going to suggest you might table it for tonight.
Well, definitely. We're going to have to table it and we'll have to.
It's not time sensitive.
Not sure that we want an internal audit, albeit that would be inexpensive.
Right.
And then query whether the audit that was just completed.
Will suffice.
Well, they did random samplings from different, so they wouldn't specifically be auditing the town clerk.
Right.
And to Jeannie's point, I don't know how long Tom was the clerk, but.
Eighteen years. Oh, okay.
Seventeen and the last three was just clerk.
Just clerk for three years.
Right. No, seventeen altogether, but just three is the clerk. Right.
Right. So fourteen, a combination of those titles though.
And it's never been done, is what, right? Other than through the general audit.
What triggers it is the leaving of employee.
Right.
I would recommend that we table it for now, get some, poke around with it and see what we can find and bring it back on the agenda when we have a better understanding of if we need to do this or not.
Yeah. I mean, my other thought is if we don't need to do it or if it's not prudent going forwards for certain people, then we should look to change the general bylaw.
Change the bylaw, right.
I mean, and again, like I said, it's just.
It's the right, right. All right. So we will table that. We need a vote to table or we can, we just table it?
To a specific date or for a future meeting?
Well, to a future meeting.
Until you have more information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, update of a new bylaw to create a charter review committee. And this is coming from the Town Council Bylaw Committee. And you're pointing at each other. I'm here, Mr. O'Connor, jump in.
Tom was the chair of this committee, and, but at the, the last meeting, when it was finally put together, he was unavoidably absent, so I took the lead. And we, we drafted the bylaw, and we sent it around to the committee to receive their approval. But I also added discussion at the bottom to try to describe, for the purpose of the council, how we came to each of the conclusions that we came to. So the bylaw is succinct, and the discussion is a little broader. I think you've all seen it, it's only one page, so I, I think I'll, I'll entertain questions. Let me see, is there anything else, else I should say about it? Oh, yes, Tom did give us examples of other charters, other town charters. But we found generally that they did not go into any great detail.
About how they undertook the deal.
About it. We also did, we did find, however, that one went into a great deal of detail, where they actually said, you needed the finance director to be on it, you need the representative of the school committee to be on it, and they, they were, they identified people. We chose a different path. And so I would, I would entertain any questions? We didn't want to bind the charter review commission too much, but we did want to set some parameters.
So at first, my first response was, the, the original charter commission was made up of nine individuals, and you're recommending just seven, just for the purpose of efficiency and trying to herd the whole group together?
For the reasons we mentioned, yeah, the, the efficiency and also the fact that it's a much smaller job, because they were, they were doing.
We're not, yeah, we're not writing from the beginning. We are simply making recommendations on edits that, or tweaking it.
A quick comment, if a town councillor is also a former charter commission member, is that one exclude the other, or can?
You have to choose.
Choose.
You have to choose which category, A or B.
We try not to put all that in there, because it's too complicated to state. But you really, if you want to be, if you're any one of these things, you want to say, this is who I want to be, this is who I want, count me as one of these.
Right.
And it would be up to the council president, anyway,
Okay.
to, to go, to go through and determine what's best.
So, just a quick footnote, this is a subcommittee of the Town Council. The original was a commission who was elected by the voters. That had to follow under state guidelines, how many members had to be on it and everything, the election process and all. This is simply a subcommittee appointed by the president to look over the charter and make suggestions back to the council.
That the council would vote on and adopt.
Oh, it's a bylaw that we need to, actually, I think we need to go through the motions of putting it on a public hearing.
Of course, yep. What's the pleasure of the council?
I like it. I was also on the committee, so.
Take a hat. So we get this on our docket for public hearing in January? Does that sound about right? I wouldn't try to tackle this in December.
For the court of law.
Well, yes, we need to vote to move it to that, but I'm just thinking out loud here, that's all. Do we have a motion for this?
No. No, I didn't know what you guys were going to do.
So we have to do two readings being a bylaw then?
Correct, yep.
So I would assume we would do a reading, a full reading of this in December, and then hold the public hearing in January, so that way there, we could already have a first reading of it.
Makes sense, yeah.
I think so. We want to move it along.
So it'd be December 10th for the first reading to be continued to January? Because if you have a second December meeting, that's solely for the purpose of interviewing for town manager?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So the second reading would be in January, January, whatever the date is. Eight, maybe. I'll entertain a motion, then, to move this forward.
We're on the committee, so I don't know if we can move, move it forward.
Well, you have to now, because you, yeah, you have to vote.
So moved.
Seconded.
So you're accepting.
We're accepting the proposed wording for this bylaw and moving it to our December 10th meeting for first reading. That's the motion, somebody wants?
Second.
Two, yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That passes unanimously. Okay, and then. We have item number three under new business, the update of liquor license offenses and penalties. And this report is coming from the Town Council Licensing Committee. Statute speaking again?
I'll speak again.
There you go.
And this, as you may recall, started last year when Tom was asked to look at the typical license rules and regulations from other communities. The only one I'm aware of that he gave us was Springfield.
That's correct.
And it was, it was kind of a mess, and people spent a long time trying to straighten it out into wording that would seem to make sense and be clearer. We had discussion that, really, the state laws and the, and the Massachusetts general laws and the regulations, the ABCC, covered 90% of this. But it was felt that we wanted to, we wanted to list some of the violations and offenses, and we certainly wanted to get into some of the details to how we would handle hearings. And so that was the purpose of putting this together. And so we presented this, or this went through the committee, and we're presenting this as our recommendation for, to the council for our licensing rules and regulations. And I'm going to leave it there, Madam President, and for questions. Because there is one other potential question we raised, but I would rather not raise it at this point, rather go through the discussion of the article.
Questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
It says that the licensing authority may impose penalties. Doesn't say what the penalties are.
Are there, they should be.
Do we have a separate list?
Is that in the back?
Right at the bottom.
Sorry, second page. And.
Saving paper here.
Thank you. As far as the penalties, are those state mandated, first offenses stuff, or is that?
Nope, that's, that's.
Local authority.
LLA, local authority.
It was also, through the chair, it was also modified.
Yes, I mean, we, the Springfield Licensing Commission had a very detailed one. And admittedly, they're in a whole different, on a whole different playing field with innumerable establishments. So a fair share of the information that we reviewed wasn't pertinent to East Long Meadow. So that's why the committee chose to modify a lot of this. I will also state that in, on the first pass, looking at the violations and offenses, we had the chief of police sit in with us, and he has given his approval of these type of, what he felt was, were appropriate offenses and penalties, as well as the consequences.
Just one other quick note, too. We are not a bar community. And since we are taking it from a community that has bars and restaurants, we don't have any bars. We have restaurants with bars. So we felt that a lot of this stuff was redundant or unnecessary. And the number of violations and penalties were, in my opinion, way out of line. They went to like five or six warnings.
Yeah.
Because, again, they're bars and restaurants.
Yes.
Just devil's advocate question. So the first offense is like five days, and then second, what if multiple offenses happen at the same time? You've served to an intoxicated person 10 minutes before, after, you know, violating last call, leading to an argument or fight that police are not called on. So you know, you have, you hit three items right there. Is that all three at once?
Well, the ABCC allows the LLA to.
I'm just curious what, you know.
Yeah, to do that on a case-by-case basis.
So that's, that one instance that with three violations would.
All at once.
Could be 36-month suspension of license.
You could go a long way with that one, right.
All right, just, just wondering.
You will see latitude built in all the way through there, which is from the state.
Okay.
They, the Alcoholics Beverage Control Commission says the local licensing authority has the right to look away or drop the hammer.
Okay.
So if I'm reading this correctly, on the first offense, the local licensing authority has a right to say, okay, we know that that may have happened, but we're not going to issue a suspension.
You can do that.
We're going to hold it, but if it happens, then we're going to, okay.
Yes, you have that latitude.
Can you still treat it as a first offense, even if you waived the fee, and then, I mean, fine? And then the second time, you bring that back and say, you know, that.
Well, I think one would be contingent upon the next.
He's exactly right, because what you do is, it is there, but it's, it's held in abeyance.
Right. Now, do you want to bring in your point, because nobody's raised it?
Well, I, the, the question before the House is, what, what is this? These are licensing rules and regulations. There is a statement that the council shall be the licensing authority of the town and shall, as authorized by the general laws, have all the power to issue licenses and to make all necessary rules and regulations regarding the issuance of such licenses. So clearly, we, we are entitled, this group is entitled to establish these licensing rules and regulations. The question is, what are they? Where do they fall, let's say, in, under general code? Where do we put them? Like the way I did that, Kathy?
You, very nicely. And it's a question we didn't really come up with an answer for when we.
What would our, may I ask through the chair, what our choices might be?
Well, okay, some might say this should be a bylaw.
There's one choice.
In which case, it would go to the bylaw committee, and there is something in the charter that would imply that that might be the case, because Section 7, action requiring a bylaw, says in addition to other acts required by the statute, any, those acts of the Town Council, which A, adopt or amend, B, adopt a fine, provide for a fine or other penalty, or establish a rule or regulation for the violation of which is a fine or other penalty, or establish fees, will require a passage of a bylaw. So on one hand.
So this is setting out a penalty.
On one hand, you have a right to support the rules and regulations as this council. And on the other hand, if you read the, the charter, technically, you might say, yeah, we can establish these rules, but we have to make it a bylaw and send it to the bylaw committee.
Question, Kathy, if I may. Okay, we've got traffic rules and orders that have come from our previous form of government to this form of government. We also have used car regulations that we haven't even talked about yet. I mean, there may be other regulations out there that we haven't really talked about, but, so they should all be perhaps dealt with the same way. So I, I just wanted to put that in there.
Thanks for.
With, with the discussion, because, you know, do you want to make them all bylaws? Do you want to make them all rules of the council? Do you want, no, I'm just throwing.
Not what I want. I think the council has the right to establish these rules, if they want.
And I guess the answer is where.
Where do you draw the line?
Where, well, and where.
Do you have a bylaw for used car regulations? Do you have a bylaw for this? What was the other thing you brought up?
Traffic rules.
Traffic rules.
Traffic rules.
But that has been established as rules and regulations, the traffic ones.
And so, and the used car as well.
Right.
Yeah.
But it's just in the, it's just in the computer.
But they existed before this was written.
Correct, correct.
Who here was on the charter commission?
I was.
Mr. O'Connor and Page, do you recall what the intent was for that? Did you rep, did you have what, kind of the thoughts?
We had discussions on everything.
That Marilyn just raised in mind, did that come up?
One of our considerations when that particular chapter was written is any fees or penalties. We wanted it done under a bylaw, and that way there are public hearings held, so the public has a right to say and give their input towards what the fees and penalties are. I think that was a huge push towards what we were doing. Our, our concern was that the public wasn't going to have input, and especially with fees. I mean, up until that point, you went to your town meeting, you had a whole fee schedule, and people got up and talked about them. Well, if all of a sudden only the council is in charge of what the fees were, we didn't think that was right. That's why we put it to where it had to be a bylaw. And obviously, we grabbed from other communities. There was multiple suggestions, and we settled on this one, being penalties and fees and stuff had to be done by a bylaw.
So I might, I might add that with having establishments like this and having neighbors that have bought these establishments and other problems deriving from a situation like that, that maybe, if, if you want to include the public and give them an opportunity to make complaints about it, it should default to probably being a bylaw in this situation.
I could have commented. Is it there any weight that these fund the umbrella of the local licensing authority, where it may not necessarily require a bylaw, but you could still have a public hearing, just sort of courtesy of involving the community?
To satisfy the public input, please.
I think the charter's pretty specific. Whenever there's a fee or a penalty, a bylaw's got to be created. And I would even go under the traffic rules and regulations. I know the council made a fee for parking overnight on the street that the police were able to, but I think that was directly in opposite of what the charter said.
But is there a monetary penalty here? I don't see a monetary penalty.
But they didn't say monetary in the charter. It said penalty, or a fee or penalty. And I think monetary, losing your liquor license for five days is a huge monetary.
It would like be like a fine.
Yeah.
Right. Monetary fine.
Through the chair.
Yes.
I, I would say that your, or, I would say that the town clerk's concern is kind of the same as the concern we had. Yes, the council shall have the authority to do this, and the town clerk says, yes, the council shall have the authority to do it. It doesn't affect whether or not it has to be done as a bylaw. That's a separate question. The authority is there, licensing authority is there. But how we do it is the, is the question. And as chair, as chair of that subcommittee, I was, thought the proper decision would be made at the council rather than a recommendation from our subcommittee, because our subcommittee could recommend either way.
So question, if, when I was talking about having a public hearing, do we have to have a bylaw in place to have input from the public, or can we do it the way that Jeannie just?
I think you can hold a public hearing for, as, as is needed.
Right.
I mean, we have a public hearing when we do the annual budget, so the public can weigh in. I don't think we have to, if we have a public hearing, we're compelled to write a bylaw. It works the other way. We can have a public hearing.
Don't disagree.
And this council may agree, but it doesn't mean down the road, there's no requirement at that point to hold a public hearing.
Right.
It would just be where if you do a bylaw, there is a requirement.
Yes, correct. And then there's also the potential, when the Charter Review Commission gets in place... What if they tackle that and say, oh, that's, you know, let's not create many, many, many more bylaws?
Down the road another year, that's something that, I mean, I would look...
I know.
It would be my thought process that we create this under a bylaw. I don't think there's any harm in it, it takes a little bit longer, we hold a public hearing on it, we get anyone's input, someone from the public may look and say, you know, this section doesn't make sense, where we don't catch it.
And the license holders may want to weigh in as well.
Right.
Absolutely.
They would be, they could be invited.
Yeah, we would alert them.
Not just, they have to sit in favor.
The licensees, we would alert them.
Right.
I make a motion.
Go.
I move that the Town Council, acting as a licensing committee, refer the proposed liquor license rules and regulations to the bylaw committee.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded, further discussion?
Just as point of correction, we should call it the local licensing authority.
Yes, look, yeah, because that's what...
Yep, what it is, yeah. And it should be the subcommittee, bylaw subcommittee.
Right.
And so with those clarifications, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That is referred now to bylaw committee.
Really?
Okay, we are at, almost to end here, a summary of action items for our next meeting. Who's been taking notes as what's going to happen in the 26th? Do we have anything that we need to do for the next time, other than look into the issue of the audit? And I don't know if we'll have a straight answer for the 26th, but if we did, we could get there, but although that agenda's already looking a little crowded.
Is the reading going to be tied into that meeting, that we talked about the first reading?
Of...
No, that's in December.
That's in December, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we've got to handle ourselves.
It's time to advertise.
Okay. Seeing no other...
Excuse me, the only other thing I thought of the executive session that Mary mentioned for the 26th, which would be an action from the town manager report.
Yeah. Okay, hearing nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
And so we are adjourned at 8:20, and we'll be back right here in session on November 26th. Thank you and good evening.